City Council and then turn it over to Sharon. You want to open your?
Thank you very much, and we're pleased to be here this evening and joining with you in looking at the downtown area and also any other things that might come up. So for Lane, we're on, we're ready to go.
All right, so you're all called to order too. What I would like to suggest, because we don't actually have the pleasure of having your company very often, so I would like to give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves to the public, and so I will just go around the table and I'll introduce ourselves, and we'll start with Pat.
Pat Albright, how much introduction do you want?
Are you all elected as a, at large, or are you elected by?
Well, I represent Zone 5, but we are essentially elected by the entire county.
Okay. Rosie.
I'm Rosie Pryor. I am elected at large.
Suzy Johnston, East Lane County Board of Education at Lane.
I'm Gary Leclerc, I'm Springfield.
I'm Chris Pryor, Eugene City Council, Ward 8.
Sharon Stiles, Zone 1.
Pat Farr, Ward 6, Bethel.
Kitty Piercy, Mayor of Eugene.
George Brown, Ward 1, South Central Eugene.
Bob Ackerman, elected at large.
George Bowling, Eugene City Council, Ward 4, Northeast part of town.
Tony McCown, LCC at large.
Betty Taylor, City Council, Ward 2, Southeast.
Mike Clark, Eugene City Council, Ward 5, North Central Eugene.
Michelle, go ahead.
I'm Michelle Mortensen, I work at, you're a clerk.
Beth, introduce yourself.
I'm like, we're, uh, Mary's Community College Support Manager.
Mary.
Mary Schildy, Lane Community College President.
John Reese, City Manager in Eugene.
I'm Lisa Gardner, Intergovernmental Relations Manager in Eugene.
Hey, well, go back over to Councilors of Lane, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Alonzo Lincoln, Southeast Eugene, City Councilor.
So we're all, before I turn over staff, I just want to say how pleased we are to be sitting here with you this evening, and as for me, I just want to tell you again what a thrill it was for me to have the building across the street from us as we sit here. Titan Courts opened up last week, and the, for anyone in the audience who has not visited, you should visit, because the rooms are beautiful, and, and very cutting-edge, I think. I think it's a very exciting project and one that we're very proud to have in our community. I know we're going to do some more talking about it in the content of the evening, but I, I just wanted to say that I find it, I think the whole project is very iconic for our city, and I think we're going to be very proud of having it represent things that we care a whole lot about and that you care a whole lot about. So, thank you all for being here, and with that, I will turn the conversation over to you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, very much, and I would also welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. And I think it'll be a pretty interesting agenda, an opportunity just really to provide some updates on a couple of things that we all are interested in as we move forward. My understanding is we haven't done these kind of joint meetings particularly often, and as Mary and I have talked over the months, oh, so this is the first, so that's a good thing. So, as Mary and I have talked over the months, so we thought it might be a great opportunity to bring all of our electeds together and just share some, some of the exciting things that are going on between the city and LCC and some things for the future, so. And I'll turn over to Mary, I know you're doing some presentations.
Yes, thank you very much. Mayor Piercy and Councilors, we're really happy to be here, and I think the first item, if we're ready to go for it, it was about the downtown campus, and then following that we'll move into some discussion about the reuse of our existing center on Willamette Street. But let me just start with the, with the new building across the street, and I'm not going to go into too much detail, because you have been involved in this since the very beginning.
But this is your opportunity to talk to the whole community, take advantage of.
Right, and so I will. And I think the first signature issue about this building is it represents an amazing partnership, an amazing partnership with the city, and I think, when I think back to really just about, about four years ago, when we were getting ready to do our bond, facilities bond that was passed by the voters in, in November of 2008, and we were discussing our downtown center and what needed to be done with that, and the fact that it was not the kind of a learning environment that we needed for our students. And some of our students who attend the downtown center are our most marginalized and underrepresented students, so we knew that we wanted to do something, but we weren't sure what we were planning to do. And along comes John Reese, City Manager, and said, "Would you, Lane Community College, be interested in having a conversation about what might be possible?" And just think about that, from that opening, look what we have collectively accomplished, a $53 million investment in downtown Eugene that is going to benefit Lane Community College, our students, and I think benefit the whole community and be part of the revitalization of downtown Eugene. So I think it's just testimony to what the power of talking to each other as public entities can accomplish when we, when we talk together, we think together, we vision together, and then when the vision becomes apparent, we coalesce around actually making it happen. And so what we have now is a public, 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 public partnership, which I think is another signature that when the public sector gets together, we can really make things happen that benefit everyone, and I, and I am just thrilled that Lane Community College is a part of this. As you know, the, the financing came from $9 million from our bond that kind of seeded the whole project, $8 million from urban renewal funds, including the, the land given to the college for, well, no given, sold for $1, which really made everything possible. $20 million of recovery bonds that allowed us to do the housing, $8 million from the state, qualified energy conservation bonds that we'll be signing off on this year, which came to us via the city, a little bit of money from the Meyer Foundation for Smart Classrooms, some money from our enterprise funds, which comes from our board's direction to deal with state shortfalls by becoming more entrepreneurial and creating revenue that will support and fulfill our mission, and some of that we brought to this downtown project. So, all of it being primarily, you know, 99.8 percent public money, and again, just testimony to the fact that when you bring those public resources together, it benefits everyone. We, we love the fact that the academic building is going to be a lead platinum building, and that the housing is lead gold. We think that our values at Lane of sustainability are definitely reflected in the work that the city is doing around sustainability and sustainable businesses, and we're really glad to add to that in the city. Whether it's the 340 geothermal, sorry, 55 geothermal wells that go down 340 feet, to the solar, to the operable windows, to the, the way that the building was designed to let light permeate through, throughout the building, everything designed to try and keep it sustainable as possible, which of course helps us in the long run, because if we invest on the front end, our operational costs over time are less than they would be if we were doing a traditional building. So we think that it's a very significant feature that it's sustainable. And the fact that we're moving our nationally-recognized Energy Management Program to the fourth floor, and that the whole building is a building that teaches about energy efficiency and energy management, you won't have to be in an energy management class to know about the efficiency of the building, it will just be pervasive throughout the building so that people will understand what's going on with the building. So we're very, very excited about that component, and we're very excited about bringing the ideas of sustainability and the triple bottom line, the environment, the economy, and social justice, together with learning, which is the, it's the quadruple bottom line for us, because we think that benefits everybody, and we actually do think that decisions can be made that balance each of these in a good way for, for the community, so we're, we're very happy about that. As the mayor said, we opened our housing last week, and I know some of you were able to be there to tour the housing as our students moved in, and if you haven't been there already, we are more than happy to give you a tour of the building in January, a scant, you know, two months away, three months away, we will be moving into the academic building, and it's, I was talking to our downtown center folks the other day, and they're very excited about their, their new digs and moving into spaces that really work for learning. And with that, I'd actually like to invite Jeanette Kane to come forward, who will talk a little bit about what actually is going to happen in the academic building. You know, as, as City Councilors, you've been very involved in the building as it has evolved over time and as we've actually made it happen, but we haven't talked much about the programming that will actually occur in the building. So I'd like to introduce Jeanette Kane, she's our Director of Continuing Education, and she will actually be the face of Lane Community College in downtown, she'll be managing the building and taking care of being the face of Lane Community College in downtown Eugene. So, I'd like to introduce Jeanette and have her just tell you a little bit about what we're going to be doing.
Welcome, Jeanette.
Thanks, thank you. And being a part of, of this project, I'm also on the board for DEI, and we're very excited, we're bearing both hats, to be a part of the revitalization and the positive economic impact that's happening in downtown. It's, it's very exciting with Beam and Bennett and Center Court projects, and you can see all the businesses starting to, to move into downtown, so it's really exciting. It really embodies, I think, our core values, as Mary was mentioning, with sustainability and diversity, accessibility, and our partnership and collaboration. Without having the partnerships that we've had with the city and others, this really wouldn't be possible. And as Mary mentioned, there's two L's, there's an academic L, and then the Titan Court, the student housing, and we already have 100 leases, and the students that are there are so excited to be there, they're excited to be the first ones who have moved in, and we had a, a potluck for them the other night, and, and gave them the opportunity to sort of get to meet each other, and, and it was really great, they're really excited. And I saw some of you at the ribbon cutting. Our academic L, which Mary mentioned, we're opening in 67 days, and we started the countdown at 365 days, and I can't believe that we're already at just 67 days away from getting keys to that building. Some of the programs that are moving in, our Small Business Development Center, which is currently at our Wildish Building at 14th and Willamette, and they offer small business development advising, most of that is free, they have management classes to help with from startup to companies that are already in business, mainly the small businesses, they do employee training, customized employee training, and we have a lot of businesses and organizations that utilize those services from the Small Business Development Center. Now, the Energy Management Program, as Mary was mentioning, which is nationally-recognized, they'll be on the top floor, and it's great that the students will be able to not only participate in, in the building, but be able to learn in an environment where they're going to be able to then actually put that to use, and, and for the community to be able to see some of those systems, so it's a great learning environment for all the community and the students. Our ESL department will be moving, they're currently housed, the evening classes in the downtown center, and they're moving into the building. Our ABSE, which is Adult Basic and Secondary Education, a lot of the GED, and some of the high school classes will be moving. And then Continuing Ed, which offers short-term trainings, a lot of healthcare, like CNA or licensed massage therapy programs, and, and they're going to be moving in. Currently, right now, they're in the basement, and there are no windows, and, and sometimes when the pipes leak, some of the sewage pipes, they, you know, leak into those classes, so they, of course, are very excited to move into some new digs with new equipment and some state-of-the-art equipment. So we're all just so excited to move in to our, our new building, and, and I think it's a great opportunity for our students, and great partnership with the city, and then being able to, to shop and, and eat and, and really help support the downtown center and downtown community.
The last thing I, I wanted to mention, we, I mean, certainly as we move into the downtown, we, Jeanette and her staff and Executive Vice President Sonia Christian, we're thinking about what else ought we to be doing downtown that suits the needs of the populations that, that come to the downtown. The last thing I wanted to mention was our Center for Meeting and Learning. Many of you have, on main campus, been in Building 19, our Center for Meeting and Learning, for a, for a charity dinner or for an event, and we have built one floor of a Center for Meeting and Learning, which is in the middle of those two L's, so a meeting place for about 250 people. It will be run by our Center for Meeting and Learning, it has windows that open out into the courtyard, so there will be indoor/outdoor space, and so the idea there is to create a public gathering space right in the middle of downtown. So it could be for a community event, or a business event, or workshops and seminars to, to serve the, the business community in downtown and beyond, and we think that that will just be a very nice community-building place that's part of Lane Community College and part of the, the downtown. And that one floor has the, the kind of the signature green feature, which is a green roof, which is wonderful for the students who are in the, in the housing, to look down and see a little bit of green nature in the middle of a, an urban setting. So we think that that will also be a very nice addition to the downtown. And then, of course, our Titan Store, which will be on the corner, selling textbooks and Titan paraphernalia and food on the go. We were very sensitive to-
Bobbleheads.
Uh, bobbleheads, yes. And the, and the tie the Titan bobblehead. We, we think it's important that we have a Titan Store downtown, but we were also trying to be sensitive to the many businesses that have been downtown and may have been just kind of hanging on, so we didn't want to just go into direct competition, but we also felt we needed to provide services in the building for our students. So we think this is a very nice store that hopefully will supply a niche in downtown that isn't served by anyone else. So with that, I would turn it back over to you, and happy to take questions.
Before we go to the next topic, why don't we just open it up, and I'm, let's not, Beth, we don't need to time this, I don't think. So, I, I just wanted to say that I think this is a, I want to say to you, the board here, I said it to Mary many times, but I want to say the board, I think this is so visionary, and it took a lot of courage to, to go with the vision, because that was not a small task to think about that much money and putting it together such an ambitious project. So I just want to say, on behalf of all of us, kudos to Lane Community College Board for, for having that special kind of vision. Lots of times we get caught in what's right in front of us and don't look out very far, but this is a real exercise in looking out into the future for a number of years, and I think that's really important to our community. So you certainly have our gratitude and thanks for the effort you put in to bring this to reality. And with that, anybody else have anything they want to add? George?
I'd just like to say one thing, I know there were countless people involved in this, this project and to make it happen, but I remember a number of years ago, Mary was calling us one by one, and is sitting us down with a cup of coffee, and laid out this vision that she had, and when I got done meeting with her that day, I was ready to go bail water out of Lake Charnelton to get it started. She approached us with such enthusiasm and foresight, and it, you know, Mary, I, I give a lot of credit to you for getting this project done the way it's been done. I know there are other people that are involved and probably maybe a little bit more than you, but you were the leader on this, and congratulations to you and your board for getting this project in the downtown area. Thank you.
Tony, forgive me for not, will you introduce yourself?
Oh, I did.
Did you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But I'm still Tony McCown.
Sorry, I thought I'd just give it over you somehow. All right, sorry about that. Anybody else want to have anything that they want to offer to this discussion? Okay, so I guess we're, we're ready to move, move on to item number two, which is the update on your strategic plan.
Actually, Mayor, we're going to do the reuse of the current facility first. I know that it might be on your mind that, you know, it's not going to really serve the purposes of downtown if we have another empty building downtown as we move into our fabulous new facility. So we have been, the board gave us direction to be thinking about the reuse of the facility and to, to fill it in some way and not create another empty space, and so I'd like to introduce Greg Morgan, our Chief Financial Officer, and Brett Roulet, Director of Governmental and Community Relations, and they've been working on figuring out what to do with our existing facilities. I'll turn it over to them.
Well, we've met with a lot of potential partners, people that are interested in looking at the building, and we've given them two criteria first, it can't become another empty spot, and two, it has to be an asset to the community, and that, and this is, beyond that, everything is, is negotiable, and, and we're willing to look, listen to different ideas. So we've been, we've been exploring that informally, but looking at all the options that, that are on the table in terms of how it would be used, but that's, that's the criteria.
Well, most of you know the history of, of the building. For those that are watching at home that may be looking for real estate, the 32nd version of, of the downtown center, it was built in 1926, it was a Montgomery Wards Department store, from what I hear, I wasn't around back then, but I hear for many years it was a great department store, and in 1977, which is when I came around, Lane Community College moved into the downtown center, and so we've been teaching classes there since then. At about that time, it was very similar to the, the past three or four years, we were bursting at the seams at the main campus, and we needed another location in order to house classes, and the downtown center has proved great for us for decades now, partly because of its location. You all know that it's situated in the heart of downtown, it's on two very busy streets, 11th and Willamette, across from the bus station, near, near the library, so it's worked out great. Jeanette kind of hit on the programs that we currently have at the downtown center that will be moving over to the downtown campus. We do currently have agreements with other entities that use the building, Lynnfield College rents it out for a couple of days a week, Lane ESD has a baking company that they run in one of the kitchens in the unit, and then we have agreements with local organizations like 4J and NAACP, none of which are real revenue generators for the property, and hopefully we can continue to work something out with them, either once we move out at the new space or at the old space. Probably the biggest challenge that we're facing with the facility, as you can imagine with its age, is deferred maintenance and some of the work that needs to be done. So right now, the building itself is about 60,000 square feet, we're in the process of compiling all the necessary work that would need to be done for it, both, both short-term and long-term. Obviously, it wasn't a 21st century learning environment, it wasn't ideally situated for that, but there's a lot of great potential uses that it could be used for. So right now, we do have a committee made up of Lane employees, we're also working with the city, Mike Sullivan, Dave Hauser from the Chamber of Commerce, and Noreen Dunells from United Way of Lane County. We're kind of looking at all the different possibilities that we could do with it. Right now, we've kind of narrowed it down to five. First, we would, first option is to sell the property outright, which, compared to three years ago, right now, there's the possibility, if you can picture the downtown center building at the corner of Willamette and 11th, it's also an L-shaped building, and there's the small property that's on the corner there that has the tattoo parlor where you buy your roller derby tickets and so forth. That's, that kind of made it a challenge for doing a complete renovation of the building, but now that property, from what we've heard, is possibly up for sale, so it does make it kind of an ideal location for someone that would want a, a big piece of land to build something on. The second option, we would continue to use the building for campus purposes, whether it be instruction, or storage, or things that fit within the college mission. Third, we would contract it out to lease areas inside the building. Fourth, we could redevelop it, it could be a business incubator, a nonprofit incubator, mixed space, housing, housing's probably less likely now that we're seeing a huge boom in housing downtown, but there's a possibility of mixed usage for it. And then the last option that we're looking at is really a, a long-term lease and, land lease and property agreement, where we could turn it over to someone for, say, 50 to 60 years, and then it would come back to the college at a later time when we're able to do something with it. So, we're going to be looking at these options for the next few months, going to the Board of Education, this is one of the first updates, they've kind of gotten on our progress and what we're looking at, but in a couple of months, we'll go to them in a similar work session environment, get some feedback as to what they think are the top three things that they would like us to look more into, and then hopefully this year come up with a final, they'll come up with the final decision, and we'll move forward from there.
The biggest advantage of the building is it doesn't have mortgage on it, and, and so we're hoping that we can create something, provide low-cost space. The incubator option is attractive to us, because it ties it in very closely to our mission of small, of small business development that, that we embrace, and so that's attractive. We've been working with the Economic Development Agency, they just did, they just gave $3.5 million recently to, working with tribes for, to build such, just such an incubator in Roseburg, and, and so we, we've talked to them a little bit, they've been, that's been very receptive. They're also working with a professor at the University of Oregon that has also been involved with them in, in developing small business across the state. So we think that maybe, again, another multilateral partnership, we might be able to come up with something pretty special here that will, that will become a big asset for the community, that's, that's our goal, but really, you know, we have to make sure that whatever it is, again, it's sustainable, and, and that's, that's the only requirement we have.
Open for questions, Betty?
Have you thought of a youth center? With a, a, speaking of cooperative ventures with the university, 4J, the city, and some other, some public service agencies, we, that we need a youth center downtown, and that's about the last place left.
Well, actually, we, you know, the Happy Friends Baking Company, that one of the entities that use it now at no cost is, is a youth activity, so that's certainly a possibility. It's a, the problem with that is the, the, making it sustainable economically, and in fact, we've had a lot of folks that have interest, what we're trying to get is a kind of a critical mass of enough different parties that we can make it sustainable moving forward. And the, the nice thing about the building, too, is it has lots of different spaces, so you could have a lot of different entities, it also has two different distinct entrances, so you could have perhaps an artist colony on one side, a small business incubator on the other side, and, and then they could share services. So there, there are a lot of interesting possibilities with it, since it has a lot of offices, a lot of spaces that can be reconfigured, because of the construction of the building, it can be pretty open. But that, that's certainly not one that could work, it's just, it's, the monetizing youth centers is difficult.
I don't know about making money, but it, you need a lot of different spaces, a space for music and dancing, a place for quiet study, a place for people to meet with councilors, perhaps, and it'd be a great place for university and LCC interns to work with young people, perhaps. And what we need is a philanthropist to start with, but I think it's ideal to have a place for young people to come where they can ride a bus, they don't have to drive cars, and the library is here, so it would be the, I, I spoke to two, two classes some years ago, one the Opportunity Center and one the government class at South Eugene, and rather opposite kinds of people, and yet, when I mentioned the youth center, in both cases, they started drawing up plans, and what, what they would want in it, and this would be here, and this would be here, and handing me the plans. So I, that's something you might consider.
Yeah, I know we, we have been approached by, well, we've been approached by a lot more people in the past year, I think, as you've seen development take off downtown, people have become very interested in, in that location, but at the same time, we want to make sure that if the college maintains ownership, that it does fit within the mission of Lane Community College, and it, it does need to be sustainable. That's kind of been the, the two goals that we've set as a committee going into this, that it's not a losing venture for us.
Thank you. Maybe sort of building a little bit on what Betty was talking about, you know, we're partners already in thinking of a regional prosperity plan. The incubator that you've talked about is, is part of what came out of that regional prosperity plan, it's something that we need in our area, so that, to me, that, that makes perfect sense, and, but you might be able to, to take that and, and look for, we also have an issue of a lot of young people who need some, a good place to be and a good direction in their lives around, they're, as much as a youth center, I would think of looking for opportunities for where youth can be engaged in whatever it is you end up doing, so that there's more good places for them to, to be aimed in our, in our community, and there may be some creative way of thinking about that that fits your mission, because part of your mission has to be sort of connected with the workforce partnership and ready- partnership and readiness for learning and future and all of that. So there may be some kind of creative way of trying to do what you want to do, and think about how youth and their readiness for life can fit into what you're working on doing.
Right. And I think, you know, the one thing we've proven in Eugene is that we can do amazing things when we come together in partnerships. And that's what it would take to pull something like that off.
Love to think about that in a very practical way.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you for that. It's good to have that update. So now I bet we're ready for the, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention before we move that from this area, and I mentioned it at the opening the other day, but I want to mention it to everybody, is that I think it's going to be really important as Titan Courts moves along, that we have some kind of ongoing sort of meetings between city and Titan Courts, because there's got bound to be sort of bumps in the road, things that work for them and don't work for them, or work for us or not. And people just need to be in sort of an ongoing conversation with each other about how we can do what we need to do to make everything work well for. I'm sure you're way ahead of me on that one, but I was just thinking the other day that, like, we have town and gown discussions with the U of O. I think we probably should have ongoing town and gown discussions with, between our LCC, people who live in our downtown.
I think that's a really good point, because I think there's a tendency to say, "Oh, done. It's open." And we need to be vigilant about what happens after we open.
You want your new tenants to have a great experience, and we want it to work well for our downtown. And I think those things, we'd like to just snap our fingers and say it's done, and everything will be perfect. But I think it would probably take some ongoing attention, and we should aim in that direction.
I'm sure Brett's on that, right?
I was just going to add, we've been very active participants with Downtown Neighborhood Association since we started envisioning this project, and we're encouraging the new residents of Titan Court to get active with their neighborhood association, get active downtown, play a part of the city they live in. So, yeah, I definitely see that continuing. Now that Jeanette is going to be the face of downtown, hopefully, she'll relieve me of my duties on the steering committee, but we'll talk about that later. And I know there's a lot of interest. I'll send an email out to all councilors, board members, and city staff. If you weren't able to make the last tour that we had of Titan Court in the academic building, we'll get you signed up, and we'll find a time that works.
Another interesting thing that might happen with this is as you find out what some of the needs students have who are living in our downtown, for us to kind of, through DEI or Harvard, to kind of make those needs known, so that people will take advantage of those for new entrepreneurial efforts in our downtown.
Well, and I think related to that, Lane signed on to a national project called the Democracy Commitment, which is to really help our students understand the importance of civic engagement. And that is certainly through voting, but it's also through service learning. And so I think we can look for opportunities for the students who are actually living downtown to engage and improve their own learning by engaging in service and, you know, the civics of the community. And I think we'll certainly look for opportunities to do that for the students.
So I guess we're going to now move on.
Mary, maybe I'll just also just remind everybody that, remember when the police moved out, as City Hall moved over to Country Club? What we did say is, is that we would also maintain a presence in the downtown, the substation in the LCC building. And that is currently being, maybe finished up as part of this project. And so our Downtown Patrol, as well as others, will work out of that building. And so that's just fulfilling that commitment we talked about.
It's going to be done in January, too, John? Is that the?
All of that, yes. All that will be in that same time, same time.
Okay. Great. It's a promise we made, so that's, all right. Ready for the strategic plan?
On that, John, so what's going to be in that police substation?
You know, with the nine officers. There's the nine officers, and I'll ask Pete to give a little bit of an update on that, if he, and we can send something out. I don't remember all the details, but it's the Downtown Patrol. There's a lot of coordination with DEI, as well as all the other security elements within the downtown. And so, and a customer interface for our public safety officers with the public. And so there'll be a ability to interface, walk-in traffic, those kinds of things.
There was something either in our city council publication or somewhere else recently that talked about, that one of the things that our officers have learned as they moved over to their new public safety center, is that it's a long way from here to there. And so they, I read that they have high interest in getting this site ready, so that they have a location to operate from here. So it's all good. All right, now are we ready for the strategic plan?
We are. And I'd like to introduce our Executive Vice President, Sonia Christian, who will give you an overview of our plan. And I know that in your packets, you did receive some information about the conceptual vision that our board approved, and the latest version of this back in February of 2012. But since that time, since we did our own internal thinking about development specifically of the 30th Avenue area and the land that the college owns around that, we've shifted our thinking to be about how do we partner and how do we connect with the other jurisdictions that have a stake in the college. And so Sonia is going to talk about where we are with that and kind of what our thinking is as of today.
So Bob Mension has been our lead person working on the long-range planning. You have a hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we prepared for you. Mostly, the focus of the long-range planning has been looking at the entire area where the Russell Creek Basin is, and to think about, well, the future is going to happen, but it's going to happen based on the decisions we make now. So we've been connecting with ODOT, in fact, with the city planners, with the Chambers of Commerce, with the University of Oregon, to really look at the I-5 corridor and anticipate some of the future planning, and to see if we could play a role in convening these conversations, and also influencing the direction of these conversations. So the handout that you have really focuses the different aspects of our long-range planning. So I'd like to start with the wetlands, which is north of 30th Avenue, across from the college, and west of I-5. And Brett talked about collaborations and partnerships, and so did Mary, that that's the way you make things happen. And in the audience, you have Pam River, who's the Chief Executive Officer of the Coast Fork, Willamette Watershed Council, and has been partnering with us. So the work we're doing with the wetlands is to look at preserving and enhancing the wetlands, but mostly to bring in an educational aspect to it. Could it be a place that people want to go to? And in the future, it could become an economic development activity which emphasizes our core value of sustainability. The next project is, there will be implications with the discussions happening with the city in terms of the UGB. And if it expands to include the Russell Creek Basin, what role could Lane Community College play with our neighbors in having discussions so we can plan, you were pursuing, you know, possible residential development, what role can we play in sort of crafting the future if this were to happen? So there've been conversations around the UGB. The next slide talks about the conversations with the county in rezoning Goshen to be industrial. And if that's the case, again, you're looking at the traffic on that I-5 corridor increasing, how do we, as neighbors, play a role in influencing that discussion with the values we bring to our table? So that's something else we are trying to stay connected to and shape and be a partner. The LTD and public transportation has been a huge part of a benefit to Lane Community College and our students. And recently, we've been partnering with LTD in looking at a route from Main Street in Springfield, crossing over the Willamette, and then dropping down on McLeary Highway. And what would that look if we had an MX route in that particular area? The I-5 and 30th Avenue interchange is absolutely a critical feature for the college. It's a safety issue. When you come to Lane during the first three weeks of the term, the cars are just really lined up on I-5. So again, we are very interested in how the city, ODOT, the county, we can really come together and raise the priority of that interchange, so that then we position ourselves for future grants and other possibilities of revenue to take care of that interchange. There's a lot of focus on the Glenwood refinement plan. And I was talking to Brett, and he was saying, you know, imagine a sort of a big convention center, and, you know, you've got the I-5, and can we sort of attract folks to the Eugene-Springfield area? And so again, what are the implications for Lane Community College looking north to Glenwood and looking south to Goshen? Oak Hill Schools, they're also looking at some expansion of their student population, and also they're engaging in long-term planning. So mostly, I think, what we wanted to leave with you is Mayor Piercy talked about, the Lane Board of Education and our president, being really courageous and looking into the future, looking into the future, whether it is fiscal sustainability for the college, looking at the future, whether we're wanting the neighborhood to be the neighborhood that we want for our future generation of students. So we've been very active in being at the table for the various conversations that have been happening.
Okay, questions, comments?
This was actually one of the elements of the joint meeting that I thought was extremely important, because the city council in its envision Eugene has expressed an interest in talking about this area, the Russell Creek Basin. And one of the, I think, the considerations, it's very important in any conversation that goes forward, is whatever we look long-range to do here, we want to do it with LCC and not to LCC. And I think that's an extremely important consideration, that just as this building across the street represents what partnership can do. If we want to look at this in the long term, I think if we do this in a collaborative way, I can imagine incredible things happening. And so the stuff that your long-range planning task force has been working on, I think, is absolutely fabulous, and seems to align really well with a lot of the interests that we have been talking about during our long-range planning processes. So I see tremendous opportunity here. And I think this is just the opening conversation in what could be, as they say in Casablanca, the beginning of a great relationship. So I'm very appreciative that this is how we can start.
I'd just add to that and say there's a certain, the city manager can, or Lisa could speak to the timeliness aspect, but this Russell Basin visioning has to happen in a fairly soonish way, because we actually have to figure out where we're going to deal with our UGB expansion. So we have to have a discussion pretty rapidly about what's possible and what's not possible, what meets the state planning goals and all of that kind of thing. Lisa, did you want to say something?
Well, Carolyn Weiss is here. The next item, she's actually going to come up and talk a little bit, give an update about what's going on with the Russell Basin. So if we can hold that item, I think maybe.
I can do that. Any other questions?
I'm curious about the MX extension to 30th, as opposed to, say, an express bus, which would sort of, I think, kind of do the same thing. What's the thoughts behind?
Well, if Andy were here, he would say that it's not, at this point, MX is a possibility, and it's on the planning. And they're applying for a grant to kind of study the feasibility of the MX being one of the public transportation options. So it's not a done deal. But looking really at the student population in the Springfield area to have access to LCC and also access to the university.
If I might say, the board had Andy Vabora from LTD at our board meeting last week, and they did pass a motion to support the regional transportation plan, including the Bus Rapid Transit System and whatever manifestation that occurs. And that motion was passed by the board.
So I did read something that was just from Andy, I think, about looking at various kinds of variations, to see which was the most appropriate for which places. So that is a conversation that's coming our way probably in more than one place.
I mean, it's very important for us, because we have eight to 9,000 students show up on our campus every day, and we've got about 4,400 parking spaces. So it's, you know, our parking lots were full by 10 o'clock today. And it's not really the best way for a student to start off their day by trying to fight for a parking space. So public transportation, and we already have a transportation fee where we do supply every student with a bus pass, and many, many, many students use that option. But we really need to ramp that up as well, because our students are from all over the county. It can take them quite a while using the regular bus system to get there. So options like MX or express bus or whatever it takes is really important for them.
Okay, any other comments? Yes?
Yeah, just a follow-up comment and a question. You know, I think I'm thinking like you are. Is there any way to speed up rapid transit development? It seems like the process is very, very long. I'm very concerned about that, because I think our needs are right now. In fact, our needs, I think, were like three years ago. But I did have a different question about Goshen, which is, I think, another area down there. And part of the plan is requesting a rezoning from rural industrial to commercial and light. And I was wondering if there is somebody who can explain the distinction as to what is allowed in one of those areas as opposed to the other.
Do you want to do that, Lisa?
Well, can I put Mark Russ on the spot to answer?
I'm actually here just as a citizen tonight, but I am a planner with Lane County, working on the Goshen project. We've proposed two different zonings, like you indicated. One of them is actually a general industrial, and one's a light industrial. The light industrial is for the smaller, partialized properties on the east side of Highway 99. The general industrial would be for the larger parcels on the west side of Highway 99. Really, we're focusing on what would be on the west side, the large parcels, large manufacturing type of employment uses. And then the east side would be smaller, supportive industrial uses to those larger manufacturing sites, is kind of the concept.
Do you have an example of just what each one of those might, that could be as an example, or were?
So lots of things have been thrown out, and we're not really trying to specify the specific types of uses, intentionally keeping it fairly broad so that the market can react or provide what might come in. So I'll just reference one of the ideas that our commissioner, one of the board accounting commissioners faced throughout is a real broad idea that has no base, I don't think, in anything specific. But that would be that the idea of wave energy on the coast, that if these large buoys are manufactured for testing that wave energy, that these buoys are going to require maintenance, or construction, or different things, that that type of a thing could be potentially manufactured on one of these large sites. Obviously, there's rail there, and then it would also require some supplemental businesses to support that large manufacturing type of thing, too. to support that large manufacturing type of thing too.
That answer your question, Pat?
Yeah, I'm assuming this is going to be a topic that will be discussed in depth over the next few years.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
And Pat, we were talking this afternoon, what was the other question you asked, Pat? The first?
Oh, how do you speed up rapid transit?
MX yesterday, Mayor.
We were talking about that earlier today and I thought maybe you would want to talk about the conversation you had with the federal folks about that.
Yeah, we, George Brown and George Poling and I had a meeting last week with a man from the Federal Department of Transportation, Rick. And a question was asked about the build-out of MX or Bus Rapid Transit and can multiple legs be done simultaneously? In concept, yes, it can, which would essentially speed up, if we move past West 11th, it would speed up whatever happens during the next phase of the expansion of MX. Also, Sonia, you'd mentioned a grant that's been applied for. I understand the $750,000 grant has been maybe given already for the study of the LCC route or the McVeigh Highway route. So it's moving forward and it's just a matter of getting things in place. And I think, Mayor, we could all probably agree, maybe on Wednesday, we could talk about MX.
We probably could.
If we can fit it on the calendar.
I think, though, the point that you're making is well-taken, Pat, and that is that if we keep going on the trajectory we've been going, you'll get one segment every fifteen years or something and that's kind of a slow, a slow trip. And what happened and what we experienced with this is when you do it that slowly, the people you started out with are no longer there and you've got all kinds of new people who don't really know what the plan is. And so it just, it slows it down even more. So having several routes trying to move it along faster just makes really good sense on many fronts. Not that it's easy to get money for anything, but it is, I think that is a really good goal, yeah.
The possibility is there and minds are open to it.
All right. Any other questions?
Just a comment. We talked about the I-5 interchange as it relates just to vehicular traffic, but most of you are probably pretty aware of the kind of traumatic winter we had out on 30th with, you know, quite a few deaths. So I just think, I just wanted to highlight that as, you know, continued partnership with the city and the county and the college and how to improve the kind of pedestrian walkways along 30th because I don't think the college can continue to have that sort of event happen like it did last winter, so.
I do think that's probably an important thing to get into, more strongly into our MPC discussions because we tend to spend a lot of time on our belt line challenges, but there are other places like this that are really difficult and dangerous for people as well.
Yes, John.
Sonia, do you know, has there been much discussion yet with LTD about the downtown LCC campus to your main campus as part of an MX direct route or?
In, no, in the conversations we've had, it's been coming through from Springfield and down to LCC. We do have regular bus service between the downtown campus and Lane, but we haven't talked about the main campus, but we haven't talked about MX.
So how is, that's a good question. So what's the, are there capacity issues around, between downtown Eugene and campus in terms of getting people, I mean, the same issues they have with Springfield?
Yeah, there have been capacity issues. In fact, our students assessed a fee on themselves to get some additional routes because our students were being left at the bus station and not able to get on buses particularly early in the term. So that is something that we work very closely with LTD on to try and make sure that the buses are there and there's room in them for students when they need it.
So are we okay with that now from the Eugene side or how, what's your evaluation of that right now?
Well, you know, we had a 40% increase over three years, so we had this huge surge of students, which is leveling off and probably going down a little bit as people go back to work, which we consider a good thing. All those students that lost their jobs and came through in a crush in 2009 have completed their studies and moved on either to the university or they've completed their career and technical degree. So we're seeing a little flattening or decline in enrollment. So I think it remains to be seen with that happening, how we stand with LTD. Sonia, don't.
No, I agree with Mary. When Andy Baborah came to the board meeting, his first slide, he had photoshopped in, you know, buses with, just packed with people like in Japan or in India for that matter. And many of us in the administration really resonated with the lack of capacity. But we are regrouping now with our declining enrollment and Bob kind of whispered to me that it's an ongoing conversation with LTD.
What occurs to me, I think this is what probably you're, what you're pointing at, John, is while you're having the conversation about how to get a possible MX from the Springfield side, where does the Eugene side come and make its way up in the same fashion? So it might be a conversation we have together about that.
But certainly with, if it's coming from Springfield, the nexus would be Glenwood. So, you know, MX down Franklin and certainly for University of Oregon students that travel out to the college and their 1,600 on any given day. So they could meet up at Glenwood and then if we had MX from there, they could come that way as well. So it may not be the whole solution, but it would be very helpful.
Brett?
I was just going to add through conversations with Andy that.
You need to come up and say it because.
Microphone.
Okay, well, first off, if you followed our Facebook page today, the students will let you know that the buses are still an issue and that many that took the 81 or 82 over the hill from the university area over to LCC, some had to wait three or four buses before they could actually get on at the bus stop because buses are at capacity. Part of the, I think, emphasis on the whole Glenwood MX route getting priority to campus first was because it will greatly help students, both students that live either in West Eugene, students that live in, around the U of O area in Springfield, but it also ties into what it would do to our community as far as what we could offer people that want to bring conferences to our community. If they want to have events out at Lane but be linked into an MX route that can get them to their hotels in the Gateway area or over by the University of Oregon, that's what that route does. So it really would help our students a lot, but it would add to the community a little bit more than, say, that direct route just over 30th downtown.
And just for your information on my Facebook, I told them that I was, we were going to be meeting today and I got all the feedback and.
About financial aid and.
Actually, the feedback was about the Student Center and a lot of concern about the condition of the Student Center on the main campus, that they felt they didn't have adequate eating facilities or studying facilities in the main Student Center there. So that was, that was the one that about six or seven of them hit. If you're going to do something, that's what I'd like, so just to share.
Because the next bond project that the board has been hearing about the last two meetings and will discuss further tomorrow in their, in their work session, is about our center building, which is the biggest building on campus, and the creation of a Learning Commons. And part of that is the food services area, it will provide, and our library area, providing spaces where students can have tutoring and other kinds of support to help them be more successful in their studies. And there's a whole concept that the board has heard a lot about and will hear more tomorrow to do that.
You can say that and I'll push it out the other, I mean.
Absolutely. We'll say that to you. Of course, our vision for that is way bigger than the resources that we have available. So we'll be figuring out what we could, yes. We certainly have money from our bond and we have a request into the state for Community College capital construction funding that we're hoping will emerge in this next legislative session and allow us to really, it would, it would really change the heart of the campus if we could do everything that we're planning with the center building project, as well as be an amazing support system for our students.
I should think you all actually would feel so pleased and proud now about how much you've gotten done, both here and up on the main campus. And I, you can just feel the pride so many people have in their community college. So that is a, that's a, that's a great accomplishment, I think. And I think nobody has any limitation on their expectations of what the Lane Community College is capable of either. So that's, I think you're in a, in a very, even in these tough economic times, I think you're in a very good place to have an ongoing conversation and to dream those big dreams because you certainly, you know, on the sustainability issue alone, you've set an amazing bar and kept after it through all of these down years. So you're just to be, you know, we will just gladly claim you and say how proud we are to have you being part of our community because that helps us so much do the things that we care about and our goals as well, so.
Well, just a couple of things on that. When we started this long-range planning, we were really thinking more internally about the land assets, the almost 200 acres that the college owns around the college, and how we could use that to help with our financial situation, frankly. What, the board challenged us to think in a more entrepreneurial way of how we could use that to create revenue that could be fed back into our general fund and replace some of the money that we've been losing from the state and then be able to serve the community in a better way. And we're still focused on that, but what is, has been wonderful to see is kind of rippling out to think about the partnerships that we could have, whether it's with LTD or with the county or with the city, with the city of Springfield, and really thinking about how collectively we can make that area the best it can be. And I have to say that I think the example of the downtown campus with the city of Eugene showed us that we actually could create these partnerships and make something amazing happen. And so it's given us a lot of energy to be thinking about all these possibilities that you see in this master plan. So that was one thing. And the second is that we have just created, because of all the sustainability work, the on-campus, the Institute for Sustainable Practices, which is an interdisciplinary instructional and operational hub for all of the sustainability work that the college is doing. Sonia, I don't know if you want to say anything else? So we're, we continue to try and strengthen and take our sustainability efforts, both on the instructional side and on the operational side to the next level.
Great, terrific. So are we ready to move on to the Russell Creek discussion?
I just want to acknowledge that the second, there was an item that was future MX. I think we covered that. I think we could invite Carolyn Burke to the table.
So many of you around the table will recall back in June of this year, the City Council directed staff to move forward with implementation of Envision Eugene. And some of you are probably familiar with this document. So in doing so, that means moving forward the package of analysis and documents that are needed for the state to accept the city's new urban growth boundary. And as part of that action, the City Council also directed staff to be sure to include in its analysis the potential for single-family residential housing in the Russell Creek Basin. So since that time, at the beginning of the summer, staff has been undertaking all the necessary work items needed to put together our package that will move forward through the City Council, through the county commissioners, and then eventually to the state for final Part of that package includes a very in-depth analysis of all the potential expansion areas. And we are in the thick of that as we speak right now. We have our senior planner, Alyssa Hansen, our deputy city attorney, Emily Jerome, have sequestered themselves in a hidden room somewhere. They call it the war room, where they have maps, where they have all sorts of things and they won't tell anybody where they are because they don't want to be bothered. And so they go there often to make progress on this analysis. The reason why it is, kind of takes that kind of dedication is just the prescriptive nature that state law really requires here. They need to look at the utilities and what services can be provided in the area and they've been working very closely with all the different providers, including ODOT, to look at some of the transportation limitations. They are looking at the natural resources. And so we've had a consultant on contract who has been out and about throughout all the potential expansion areas, identifying potential wetlands that would need to be protected. And we are expecting the report from them in October. But most important and what is taking the most time is really kind of the legal analysis. As I said, there are state laws that are very prescriptive about where you are allowed to expand your urban growth boundary. In addition to just the state law, there is also a whole body of legal opinion that comes through an appeal where another community has tried to expand their urban growth boundary. They were appealed and then there was a ruling that came down. And so it's important to factor all of that kind of new information in with the existing state law because it's in all of our best interests to make sure that we are, we are well within state law with whatever urban growth boundary expansion is proposed. The, what we are looking for specifically in the Russell Creek Basin area as well as other areas is land for single-family housing. We also do have an industrial land need that is focused more on the Clear Lake area out by the airport. The study area, in case you didn't know, around Russell Creek Basin really looks at both sides of 30th Avenue, both north and south. We go as far south as the new park acquisition to the south of the school there. That is a study area of approximately 2,000 acres, which obviously is big and it's much bigger than anything that would be needed, but it's incumbent on us to look, to kind of cast our net wide because we have a need for about 910 single-family homes, equivalent to maybe approximately 350 acres, give or take. And because we don't know the full extent of the natural resources in the area, we need to really be kind of looking at a larger area than we would actually need. So just want to reiterate that we are looking at a number of different areas around the urban growth boundary and doing this analysis. We think that we will be ready to bring forward kind of our findings before the end of the year, so within the next couple of months, we should have more information about kind of where we, where we are in that, in that whole process.
Would be helpful to me also to see the background on when we've tried to do some, or someone has tried to do some development in that area before and what happened in that process because we should probably learn from that. Not only what we might want to be careful about, but what we might expect or, I mean, there's probably a lot to be learned from that.
And we have had an introductory meeting with property owners in the area so they know the study is underway.
Other questions? George?
You said that all potential expansion areas are going to be kind of reexamined or examined more in depth. Does that refer to the three that we're really talking about, the Gimble Hill, Clear Lake, and Russell Creek, or does that include all the other ones, like Dillard Road and all the other ones that were kind of looked at cursorially?
Well, state law does require, require us to do a comparison of all of the potential expansion areas. So if they all fall into the same category of what's called the Priority One land, then we do need to do a comparison analysis of all of those. So in answer to your question, it does include, the final legal findings will include those areas as well.
And not just the three that kind of.
Correct. And then there was another area added to the west of the highness property.
Yes, I remember that property. Okay. Okay.
Hey, Betty.
How many acres are you talking about for these 350 homes?
It's actually 910 homes. And depending on the...
300 acres.
Depending on the landscape of where those homes would be landed or would be located, approximately 350 acres, give or take.
So if you put that into the city and multifamily housing, that many housing units could take about eight square blocks or how many?
Well, I guess that would depend on the densities that we were looking at.
How many acres are in a square block?
I don't know. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know. Anyone?
I'm just thinking...
You've stumped everybody, Ben.
That it would take very small amount of land to do that many homes if we did multifamily, comparatively. Just a point, which is, of course, what I think we should do.
But we have established our plague field. Yes, Pat?
Yeah, I was thinking about the same kinds of things, and I was curious about to what extent do you take in the landscape out there because that's a, there's some wetlands, there's a variety of other elements out there. And when I think of putting 900 homes on 350 acres, my simple math gives you about a half an acre a house, which is about the equivalent of a large downtown block or a lot. And it seems like the terrain might not be amenable to city-block kind of structures. And so is there, is that taken into consideration?
It absolutely is, which is why I'm actually even a little reluctant to throw out acreage numbers, but it's what people kind of do like to think about that in terms of, we, number one, we are doing a natural resource inventory, so those that require legal protection, they are removed from the area, so we wouldn't be counting those. We also look at sloped lands and kind of adjust our densities based on the topography of the area. And so it would be very much tailored to the individual landscape.
Mike?
Thank you, Mary. I have an interesting question. It's more of an Envision Eugene question, I suppose, but since we're on this topic. Once land comes within the UGB, what's the only process, is it the only process by which that comes into the city limits then at the point at which that property is developed?
Can you rephrase the question?
I will. Once you create the new UGB and you have the new lands within the scope of the new UGB, at what point do any of those lands come within the city limits, only at development?
Well, they would need to be annexed into...
And is that you, is that based on the changes that they did with the boundary commission and the changes in state law? Is that the only time that that's going to come within the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tony?
Do you have to consider any impacts of higher density industrial uses and Goshen for your residential assessment? I mean, I'm assuming you don't because it's too different.
I don't believe so.
I was just wondering if anybody knows the impact on waste sewage, because we, I mean, we have our own treatment plant, which we've invested a lot of money in, but it's been really, really taxed with a 40% increase in students. And if there's going to be further development out there, what would be the solution as it relates to wastewater?
My understanding is we have looked at that and it does appear feasible. There was, I'm not sure of the technical term, maybe a pump station in the Glenwood side that is sized for this capacity. And so presumably then a wastewater line could run down the I-5 corridor to serve the basin there. So it does seem feasible.
That's something that I'm sure we would be at least interested in exploring, hooking into in the long run. I mean, when we decided to invest in our own treatment plant, we were under a DEQ order at the time, and they would have had to declare us to be a health hazard in order for us to be even eligible to hook into the sewage system. And we couldn't afford to do that because it could have closed us down as an institution. And so we went ahead and took care of it through our prior bond, but it's not going to be too long before we have to make further upgrades. And so if there's a broader solution, we should be talking about that as well.
I know this is sort of an obvious thing to say, but after you have a discussion like this, you feel like saying it just because you know people are listening and they're having the opinions that they have. And so I just would like to say that it doesn't matter whether it's a multi-unit dwelling or a single dwelling. Our goal is not to jam as much of everything in to an area as we possibly do. You want it to be livable and to have a, and to be, achieve all the other goals we have as a community for how we live well together and how we create good places for people to do. And we have mixed-use development and we have taken into consideration our impacts on everything. So nothing, nothing of trying to solve the housing problem or challenge is separated from all the other things that we are trying to achieve at the same time. It just seems like an important thing to always say to people, we're not doing this in isolation of our, of our other goals or in isolation of what we want, whether it's on the campus or anyplace else in the community. There are quality of life goals that are, we have for all of our community and will continue to have.
I would just add to that, that we also have certainly looked at many opportunities to use our land inside the urban growth boundary as efficiently as possible. And the proposal that we have does forecast a need for an additional population of about 20% more people. And the proposal talks about a 3% land expansion increase. So 20% population, 3% land increase.
Any other, yes, Bob?
Yes, I noted from the agenda summary and from your comments and the handout that we got from LCC a moment ago, that the city in looking at the LCC basin is considering multi, or single-family residential use. I'm wondering if that is in some conflict with our strategic plan, that is LCC's, because we envision some commercial usage of the property which we own. Do you see any conflict there and how is that being mitigated?
It's something that we need to explore further. As with all of the potential expansion areas that we're looking at, we are, we also want to look at ancillary uses or uses that will support the residential development there. So we don't want to create an island of residential without any of the services around it. And so actually, we have language in the proposal that says specifically that in addition to looking at the residential land, we can look at some commercial in those areas to kind of support that area. So we want to talk more about what the college's specific proposals were and how we think that that can be accommodated. It's, Bob mentioned, and I have been communicating a little bit, and we will continue to coordinate on issues like that as we get more information.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this discussion? Seeing none. So now we just wanted, we have a few minutes left. We're going to close this meeting out at 7:00, but wanted to ask if anybody, this is your opportunity to ask any question of us that you would like and vice versa, I guess. So just wanted to open it up for any, any questions or comments anybody wants to ask or make.
Well, just don't run me down with them.
Yes, Rosie?
Well, I would just like to add my, my own appreciation to Sharon's and to Mary's for inviting us here this evening and for having this conversation with us. Obviously, we have a brilliant track record for collaborating and cooperating in there. As we've all heard this evening, there are quite a few opportunities for us to continue to do some pretty brilliant things going forward. So I appreciate having us here and hope we can return the favor. And I'm not sure who your caterer is, but we're bringing good services to bear on that as well, so.
Good. Anybody else? Anything for the good of the order? Pat, did you have something you want to say?
Just very briefly, the coordination is exemplary. And as I say, we had the previous meeting regarding LCC and the board's plans for the future, and I can support it wholeheartedly. One thing that Carolyn mentioned was some land that we're looking at west of Hynek's, which doesn't have transportation facilities to it at this point in time, so we can't really develop it without the transportation facilities. I think it's important to note that you are looking at transportation facilities, that whether it's public transit or another Willamette River crossing someplace out Main Street in Springfield. It's important that whatever we do in the LCC Russell Basin, that the transportation exists to support what we want to do.
Alan?
I'd echo that comment, but also the comment that when we first saw the plan, master plan for the build-out, a potential build-out of LCC on both the north side of the road and on the south side of the road, 30th Avenue, and talking about, the number one thing that you saw from your, one of your survey was that students wanted to live near campus and potentially building that out. And having that dovetail with the Russell Basin expansion of the UGB was one of my primary criterias for putting that on the table for further look by our staff to see if that wouldn't be where we would have our expansion for, for both multifamily and single family. So there's a lot of stuff that still needs to go on as we move forward on that, but that, I think, most of the people in the council were thinking in that direction as well. Because those two things seem to dovetail really nicely. And if we didn't move with the UGB expansion in that area, it made it difficult for you potentially to do your eventual build-out on the north side of the road and south side of the road. So I, for one, was real intrigued by that, and it moved me towards that Russell Basin as the potential expansion area. And it includes, so then when you do that, you have that, you have the housing and the infrastructure, the utilities, and the transportation, all of that gets wrapped into that, that package for where you expand.
So you have your vision, and we have to figure out how much of what can be done in that piece of land and all the things that go to accommodate that, and then try to figure out what's, what's possible, and then, and then see what that does for you and what that does for us and what that does for us all together. We have to kind of move that along with, to some extent, with somewhat swiftly so that we at least have our, our plan for how we're going to handle whether that's the right place for us to handle more growth or the place for you to accommodate more growth. So we, that's a fundamental question that we need to get answered as soon as we can all put our heads together and all of, all the information that we have together. And then we'll know what we have to, what the possibilities are that we, that we have. So thank you so much for being with us this evening. We really appreciate it. We look forward to future conversations. Thanks so much.
How's eating going?
Don't forget, they're still live.